Okay, welcome everybody to our second city council meeting for the month of February. This is Wednesday, February 19th, 2014, and I do call this meeting to order. And we are going to start with the youth of the month, so we'll ask Debbie Townsend to come up and introduce her student.
Hi, I'm Debbie Townsend. I am the just a gifted and talented resource teacher at the Waukaa Learning Center, and I nominated Ms. Chloe Markham as youth of the month. And I'd like to share a little bit about her with you. I would like to nominate Ms. Chloe Markham for youth of the month. Chloe's a fourth grader at the Waukaa Learning Center. I have the pleasure of working with her each day as she is part of the Channel 99 morning news crew. Being on the news crew is a big responsibility. Only three to four students are chosen each year. These students are asked to arrive at school early each day where they set up the computer and video equipment, tape the news, and assist with troubleshooting or anything necessary. They also start the news each morning which is broadcast to each classroom in the school, reaching over 700 students and staff, and it's a really important part of our school day. Chloe takes this responsibility very seriously. The extreme dedication and commitment she shows sets her apart from the others. Each day she reports to work with a positive attitude, a smile on her face, and a willingness to do whatever is needed to be done. Her work ethic alone is inspiring, but the dedication she shows is second to none. Chloe's an incredible role model to others, serving as a big buddy and mentoring first grade students, she's part of a destination imagination team, a competitive dancer, a chain skier, and this year served as the manager for the award-winning Waukaa High School Dance Team. Extraordinary considering this is all in addition to being a top-notch student. I must also include that Ms. Markham is incredibly kind, caring, and compassionate. She's sensitive to others and can always be counted on to do the right thing, which we all know is not easy to do at any age, and Chloe does this with confidence and grace. This young lady is making a tremendous difference in our school and in the Waukaa community, so please recognize her as youth of the month for the City of Waukaa.
Chloe, we do have a certificate for you to recognize you as a student of the month for this month. Now, thank you, and we'd like you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Congratulations.
I think you could run for mayor.
Mayor. Yeah, good. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on. We'll have Sandy read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Proczaski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Consent agenda, you have a number of items on your consent agenda. Are we okay with those items as printed, or would we like to see any of those items moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Anybody?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented to us?
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, there are no additions unless council has something that they would like to see moved around, we can just go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Public input, this is for any individual that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. We would just ask that they step up to the podium and give their name and address for the record, and keep their discussion to five minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to give public input? All right, we'll move on then to department announcements and reports, and Gene, you're having a fun week, so we'll start with you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this week we've been blessed with having our audit team of Johnson and Block here. Couple long days and a lot of emails back and forth. They hope to finish up sometime next week, and they'll be here in May to present the audit. I have no idea, no indication how it looks. Everything, we found everything they asked for, that was good. Sometimes you just can't find it, but it looks pretty good. And that's all I have to offer for tonight.
All right, thanks, Gene. Dominic, the library.
We have our film series for February. Probably speaking to the microphone. We have our film series for February going on for the next couple of weeks, and we have our Lego club, which we've been having every, or sorry, one Saturday a month for the past couple of months, has been going really great. That's also going to be in the next couple of weeks. We are going to be, we got our grant for upgrade for our bandwidth for the library. That switch is actually going to be taking place tomorrow morning. That's the highlights for the library.
All right, thank you, Dominic. Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My report was in the pack, and I was going to highlight a couple of things. First off, I'd like to remind everybody that next week, Tuesday, you guys are going to graciously come in for the first session for strategic planning for economic development from six to eight o'clock here, or in library rooms A and B. That'll be the first session. I did send out an email, I believe, last week regarding, I'm trying to set up individual one-hour meetings with all the council members prior to session two. I apologize for the partial timeline, but wanted to do it after we presented all the data from session one and before session two where we do a SWOT analysis. I was able to schedule, I believe, six of the council members. There's a few out there that I still need to confirm a meeting with. Alderman Peterson, Alderman Shamble, Alderman Hagan, Alderman Mayo, and Alderman Hackett. I'm just looking for, and I can meet after this meeting, just to try to nail down a potential time within the next couple of weeks here to have a one-hour meeting with everybody. Looking forward to that session. We, I attended the governor's conference on economic development last week, and there's actually some additional information that we're going to put in there. Dave Teal and I are definitely excited to present some of the information that we learned about the business climates within the state and some of the initiatives that the state's looking to proceed forward with. With that, within my department, I've been working on community profile and business attraction pamphlet for our community. The opportunity for when developers come in, we were able to hand out this pamphlet for available sites within the community, some information about the community from the educational to the economics and business climate that actually will tie in well, as Dave Teal and I will be at a seminar next week, Thursday, in Appleton for in-development. It's presented by Insight Magazine, and we're doing a speed networking event where we have about five minutes per, kind of like a speed dating thing, but we get to meet with different developers and different companies, and we get to kind of lay out and present one project or one location within the community that may be for interested parties to come and develop within their community, so I've been preparing on that. Probably within the next month, the city council will be taking a look at a code enforcement policy. This year has definitely been hard on my department along with John's department when it comes to snow plowing and enforcement of shoveling sidewalks. We've had some issues, and we're just trying to clean up some of the policies and procedures, trying to streamline some of the process. So, this council will probably be taking a look at a code enforcement policy within the next month. That'll not only before winter activities, but also for summer, especially when it comes to grass cutting, really trying to streamline the process between the two departments and be a little bit more efficient with everybody's time. Working with East Central Wisconsin, the planning commission is about to begin to embark on a recodification of the zoning code. Working with East Central will start that process within the next month here. A couple of weeks ago, we started, we had our kickoff meeting for the Main Street Project and Visioning Committee. Thought overall that it went very well. The committee seemed very engaged with the information that we presented. We had a little background information. John presented some information about Main Street, the current conditions, and we had some general activities to really kind of get an understanding of place-making and what the committee's idea or identification of where downtown is, and try to get an understanding of a study boundary as we move forward. The next meeting is scheduled for March 24th, location to be determined at this time, but moving forward with that project. South Park, been low cold out there, but it appears that we are going to be starting that, restarting that project within the next couple of weeks here. I spoke with Roger today, and we are still on track to have this open before the Fourth of July, which is our goal for that project. You'll probably start seeing vertical construction within the next two weeks from Barron's contracting. Our interns are working well between my department and Henry's department on a couple of different projects, focusing on transparency with our city government website. Currently, within my department, we're looking at doing a rebrand of the community and economic development website, trying to get more information out, be a little bit more transparent, and try to get some more sense and engagement. So, working on that currently, hopefully to lay that out within the next couple of months. Project basis within the community, we do have a couple of developments that are still looking within our industrial park, working with some of those existing businesses out there about expansions. The former Ashley store on Fulton Street is going to be redeveloped and should be coming to the planning commission next month, and as many are aware, Foundations for a Living is looking to develop a warm and shelter here within our community. That has been tabled at the planning commission at this time as the applicant is doing their due diligence and talking with the community members, business owners, and currently I have advised them to take a look at possibly developing an ad hoc committee of other individuals within Waukaa County to address homelessness, not with only within the city, but the county as a whole. So, that project is slowly progressing. I reached out to the City of Appleton and provided some information to the applicant to follow up on.
Thanks, Brennan.
Thank you.
John Edelbeck, Public Works.
Okay, Hillcrest Drive and Fulton Street project, the design is proceeding on those projects. Short of approving capital monies this year for that, that will be a 2015 construction project, but we are proceeding with the design on that. Snow removal events, we've been pretty active in snow removal this winter, and most recently storm sewer thawing. I've seen some of the thawing of some of the snow in the last few days, and we've got frozen storm sewer leads and inlets, so we've been out doing whatever we can prior to getting cold again, so we have another snow event coming up tomorrow, and I guess I encourage everybody that's out, you know, in the weather, out driving, to just keep an eye on the weather events, and tomorrow will, could possibly be another large event, so we'll have crews working through the day. They'll probably open up some main roads during the evening hours, and then we'll have crews coming back early in the morning. Typically on a, if we can work it out that way, we typically do come in about 1:30 in the morning to try to get most of the plowing done, especially in the downtown area, and a lot of times can be actually done throughout the city by 9:10 in the morning, so I appreciate everybody's patience. It's a process that takes a lot of effort and on our crews' part, and I guess we don't stress enough with them safety, so I encourage motorists to be safe when driving around or near a plow as well. We do have a water use trickle notice in effect currently. We have distributed that information to radio, television, websites, Facebook sites. I'll be talking on the radio tomorrow about it. We encourage all homeowners, business owners, any water customer to actually run their water at a trickle or at a pen thickness to prevent freezing. We still continue to get four or five a day calls a day, and we actually have to go out and try to thaw those lines. And there are some that we cannot. We have to run garden hoses to some homes from their neighbor's house to provide service for the next month or two. So, it's a substantial situation. We do have mains that have been affected, fire hydrants, so it's, we had hoped not to go to this trickle notice, but it's really at a point where even the police department, we had the line freeze up, six-inch main going into the police department froze. So, gives you an idea of the severity, so.
John, can you just explain how you think the billing process is going to work while this is?
Sure. Yeah, in the notice, we tried to be clear on that, but we will be utilizing an average billing. Our computer software is allowed to do that. We'll be using the previous several months for average billing. If, after we go through that billing process and we bill out averages, if someone has a question or a concern, they can obviously contact us and we will look at that. If they did actually, if they actually got overbilled by averages, we continue to read the meters, and that will actually end up as a credit down the road, so if the billing is under, the use is actually under the average, there will be a credit down the road for you on that, because we will continue to read the meters. So, yes, we do not expect residents to pay for that water or sewer, additional water or sewer use, so again, we encourage you to run your lines. We've had newer homes even freeze up, service lines freeze up, especially the ones that run underneath their driveways or under pavement, so it's going to be a while. It could likely be into March where we would cease the trickle notice. So, I mean, there's 50 communities in northeast Wisconsin that are in the same boat as us and are utilizing that notice right now, so unfortunately, we had to go to the same, take the same steps. We were proactive in identifying about 25 to 30 homes that we actually had them start running their water around January 1st. We've had, we have a list of homes that we know are problem homes, even back from 20 years ago when we had a very severe weather, a winter weather. Those homes were targeted, and we think that's helped them substantially in not freezing up, but there are a lot of new homes that are freezing, obviously, this winter, so.
John, the lines that are freezing up are actually the laterals, right?
Yeah, the water services. We have had some main problems, but the majority, that's not typically the majority, the main service, mains that are freezing are on very low or no-use water mains, where there's no use on the mains themselves, but they are water laterals to the houses. Correct. We have had some sewer problems, sewer service lateral problems as well, maybe back pitch sanitary laterals or flat laterals, and we're doing what we can to help out those customers as well, so. On a different note, we'll be working on an agreement renewal for the Chain Lake Sanitary District. It's been 20 years since the city signed the agreement with the Chain Lake Sanitary District to take their waste and to treat that waste at the treatment plant. So, I've reached out to staff, city attorney, others, and you may be hearing some more about that in the next few months, especially dealing with our billings with the sanitary district and strength of waste and cost of treatment. Other than that, we have other things going on, but other than that, we're at 8% of our budget year. Street division is at 6%, water is at 3%, sewer is at 3%, and our snow and ice control budget as of the end of January is at 20%.
Thanks, John. Aaron Parksner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with saying that Andrew Whitman is now on board full-time as our recreation program supervisor, so we're happy to have him. Some of the things he's kind of started the ground running here, he's working on a kickball league for coed that'll kind of utilize Swan Park better the second half of summer. That's a beautiful facility, and if we can use it more July, mid-July through August, that'd be great. We feel like we can kind of fill a niche and involve some family-type activities out there as well. Also, some looking into licensing for outdoor movies in parks, possibly on Friday or Saturday nights. Those would be family movies that would be shown there. Other things he's looking at is coaching education for all of our leagues, and then he's also working with our Achieve group on some initiatives for healthy initiatives in the community. Our brochure will be out for the summer brochure on March 12th. We're changing it up a little bit this year. In the past, we've had one brochure. It's a pretty nice booklet that we put together for all of our annual programs, but promotion has been one of our more difficult things to get a hold of here in our department, and we just found out that a lot of those fall and winter programs, it just wasn't, it was impossible to pin down exact dates, times, and what people are looking for, so we're going to cut the size of that brochure, cut some pages, and then include another brochure in August that will get distributed before the school year. We think that can definitely help with some communication pieces. So, look for that first one though, March 12th. We are also working with Waukaa High School on possibly relocating the youth soccer program from the chain school to the high school fields. I actually just sent a maintenance plan that would involve efforts from our city crews, school district crews, as well as the Waukaa Youth Soccer Association, and that has been sent off to Carl Agabretten at the school today. Just kind of waiting response from him before I show that to their superintendent of facilities as well as their business manager. We did have a friends meeting who discussed possible fundraisers this year. Last year, our big fundraisers were our Little League tournament and Fallarama. We are looking to keep Fallarama. The softball team has taken over the Little League tournament, so we're looking at additional fundraisers such as the Iowa Car Show, parking cars concessions there. We did bring up Lambeau Field again, as well as some tree sales and wreath sales, and we'll vote on those options in our March meeting, which will be March 10th. We have started the process. Our wellness coach, we've been working with the Wellness Committee, and our wellness coach, and this is maybe something Henry will touch on, but we met her last week. Her name is Kristy Simeon, I believe, and she came and met with our Wellness Committee, which has a bunch of representatives from a lot of departments here in the city, and she's going to introduce herself to more of the employees at the Chili Cook-Off here coming up next Tuesday. She'll start her normal schedule the first Thursday in March. Beginner basketball, one of our programs, we do have a big halftime performance where you'll see about 75 kindergarten through second graders at halftime of the girls varsity game on this Friday, so if you're not doing anything, that'll be entertaining, to say the least. And South Park, Barron's, like Brennan said, is looking to start in about, in the next couple of weeks here, just finishing up that project in Waiwiga that they're working on. And then after this meeting, we'll meet in library room A and B over there for the needs assessment. This was something that I kind of just envisioned council doing, so, you know, department heads, if you want to partake in it, that's great, and want to give opinion, we'll definitely take any of that, but, you know, I guess it wasn't something I was expecting, so unless Mayor or Henry have different ideas, I just wanted to kind of make that clear. Other than that, I, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Aaron. Chief Koch.
Thanks, Mayor. My memo was in your packet. We had our regular meeting. We are in the process of looking for a part-time officer. We had to cancel or postpone until next month due to illness. You'll also notice in the news propane costs have skyrocketed, which have caused us to limit our use of our squad, use of the propane. We just switched back and forth to unlet it, so we've suspended the use of propane until that cost comes down. As John indicated, we had our water main freeze at the building last week. The following day, we were able to hook up another water source, so really we're getting our water source through our garden hose for the entire building right now, which has caused some problems and kind of deactivated our fire suppression system. Other than that, it also says in my memo, we got alerted to two audit notifications, one, well, they're both from the state, one's from Department of Justice, the other one is Training and Standards, and it's very unusual that both of them hit at the same time, but I guess stars are aligned for me this year, and within the next four to six weeks, we'll have two audits going on. Other than that, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Henry.
Well, we had an election last night. I wanted to thank a number of people. I think turnout was a little heavier than we maybe anticipated.
We had 322 voters, which was a 10 and a half percent turnout.
We did move the location to the new gym, so we might have screwed some of you guys up, but did a nice job. I want to thank Aaron and his folks, and also Russ to helping us set up for the election. At the last meeting, we discussed our capital planning, or maybe it was the last meeting in January, but the mayor wanted me to go ahead and try to schedule Brad Vigut for a meeting in March to discuss our debt policy, and I do have him scheduled for the Tuesday, March 4th meeting. So, you'll see an analysis of other municipalities' debt policy sort of as a starter to get discussions going, but Brad will be with us that day. I would expect that next month, you'll be seeing the final resolution on the Runway Drive project sewer extension. You'll be setting the final assessments on that project, and I think those affected are going to be quite happy because that project came in under budget. John's reported on it in the past. It's, I've been here a little bit of time, and it's got to be one of the smoothest projects we've had, you know, in terms of the difficulties they run into through the construction, so everything worked out well. I think we've got to just finalize all the easements, John, that are related to that project, and I'll follow up with you on that, but you'll see the final resolution assessments next month. During the budget process, we did discuss, at least in my department, some of the deficiencies that I'm noting, kind of in personal management areas. And over the past few months, I've been working with the department heads, and we've identified a number of areas, and I wanted to bring that to you next month for discussion and get your input and maybe move forward on some simple, quick fixes on a few issues that we've identified, but please expect to see that next meeting. And then finally, on South Park, again, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity, but my office, we're putting together our first pay request to the DNR, and there's a lot of paperwork that we've got to pull together for that. But if you remember, there were a couple bid packages that we decided to do internally, the storm sewer and the water line, and one of our goals, well, two of our goals in doing that was number one, to save money, but also we can use that city labor, materials, equipment towards our local share on the grant. Now, I just want to report to you, I think this is really good news, and I'd like to thank all the staff that was involved in that, in Public Works and Recreation and the Water Department. The estimates for the water was 24,400, and it came in at 13,400. The storm sewer estimate was $30,700, and it came in at $10,500. So, you know, the aggregate, we're looking at about $22,000, excuse me, $32,000 in savings just on those two facets of the project. So, that was very positive, I would like to thank, please make sure your guys know, because that was, when I was pulling that together, I was very pleased to see that, so. If you have any questions on it, that's all I have.
Thanks, Henry. Okay, let's move ahead to new business. We have a couple of items that we need to discuss and act on tonight. The first one is a request from Tyler Wolf from the First Assembly Church for a 5K race on July 4th of 2014. There is an email that he had actually sent Sandy in your packet, Tyler, I'm assuming, right? If you don't mind.
Sure.
If you would, just for the audience, you know, and the public that's watching, just explain what's going on.
Sure. Well, I submitted-
Well, I submitted two race routes. The reason that there's two routes is because our first option starts on our church property. And it, if you know where First Assembly is, there's a ton of woods back there, and we plan to mow a route, so the first mile of the three-point-one miles would be on our church property. Now, when the weather gets warmer, when we go back there to mow that out, if we run into problems with, because with Crystal River there, there might be some swampland there. And if that, if we run into issues with that, then we would go with Route B. And it's a fun run. So, although, the run will be entirely on sidewalks, except for about a quarter-mile on Berlin, which recently I found out, I've been saying that street name wrong. I just moved here. But people, they correct me every time. But, so, if there's too much swamp back there in the woods behind the church, then we would go with that, which is close to being identical to the first route, except it just goes up to Lake Street.
I noticed in your request that you're going to have a number of volunteers that I, that will be on these intersections, especially with Route B.
Yeah. The areas of concern is we would cross Berlin twice, going over to Lake Street, or if it's Demerist, then we would have people there going both ways when we're leaving the church and when we're returning. And then I would plan to have one volunteer at each, at each time that they cross the street. Like I said, it'll be on sidewalks, because it's a, we'll do a fun-run deal, but we'll have people guarding each intersection, directing runners where to go. I actually stand corrected, on Evans, they'll be on the side of the road. It's a less, it's not as busy of a street. But I plan to have people on road bikes kind of trailing along with the runners.
Chief, you look this over?
Yeah, we do not have any staff to assist. It's the Fourth of July with all the other events going on. And plus, it's a holiday for officers that are off, and it's too cost-prohibitive to bring them in for this event. I guess as far as previous runs have gone, I think RMC, they've always had at least one, if not two, people at every intersection. Every intersection has to be covered. And that'll be up to them with their volunteers. And if they're going to be in the road stopping traffic, they have to be outfitted with traffic gear and vests. We could supply some of them. I don't know if we'd have all of them. And I don't know if they'd need barricades from the Street Department to assist in marking these intersections either.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Well, Berlin Street is a state, or a county highway. So, I, you're not going to be able to close that road for this event. So, if they cross that intersection, you know, state law would regulate as far as pedestrian crossing. Vehicles have to stop for those pedestrians or runners. Obviously, having people there will help raise awareness. If they are running in the street on Berlin, again, you'll have to comply with state law as far as what side of the road you're on, running or walking against traffic, you know, obviously on the left side of the road. So, I guess encourage you that. But you might want to touch base with the County Highway Department just to let them know, because that is a county highway, Berlin is. And it sounds like the portion of the, the portion of the road will be from your church to Bethany, I presume is the section you're referring to.
Yep.
Before the sidewalk starts.
Just for clarification, there is no pedestrian right-of-way with runners. You can't run across an intersection. So, just because they're in an intersection, it's not, that doesn't apply.
Sure.
That's why you have to have people out there to stop traffic and drive them. Or they stop. It's, I don't know how you plan on doing it.
Yeah, well, like I said, it-
They didn't have to stop at intersections.
Yeah, it will be a fun run. I mean, it's not going to be, we'll time the race, but it's not going to be a chipped race if you follow on that. And so, people stopping at intersections, letting a car go by, won't be. People who sign up for the race, it'll be very clear, fun run. It's a fundraiser for Convoy of Hope. And so, if they needed to stop at an intersection, the race would be at 3:30. I'm not sure what traffic is going to be like at that time of day on Fourth of July. But they, people, it will be communicated that they would, you know, need to comply when crossing intersections.
So, I heard a couple of things. One, that the chief might be able to supply you with some vests at some of the spots, unless you have some yourself.
If, we would plan to, especially on, on the busier intersections, we would plan to have people invest. If we were able to have that supplied, that would be great. Otherwise, we would make that purchase or borrow, borrow out.
Okay. And John, also, since that is a county highway, John said that you should contact the County Highway Department. So, if you want to talk to John and get the number of the person that you need to talk to.
Sure.
There, that would be great. Henry, from our standpoint, do we have to have any licenses for this or anything?
No. I don't think we issue anything.
Okay.
I think it might be at some point, sir, if, once you decide what route you want, to just let the police or my office know, and we can-
Sure.
-seminate them from-
Yeah. We are, we're really hoping that the first route works, because that takes a whole mile off of being on city sidewalks. If it doesn't, we would let you know that we plan to go with Route B.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Good luck. I hope it works for you. We are looking for approval of the, or asking if you want to approve this request from the First Assembly of Church.
I would move for approval of the 5K race on July 4th.
Second.
Motion by Fenske, second by Keeland, that we approve of the request by Tyler Wolf for a 5K race on July 4th of 2014. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have in your packet, it is on page 179. It starts, this is agreement between the Humane Society of Wapaka County and the City of Wapaka. Henry, you-
Yeah, this is a one-year agreement. It is a month late, so we're going to be acting on it retroactively. There are no changes. It's the exact same. There's no increase in any fees, and it would just be a status quo agreement. We will try to get it in here by the end of next year, so we can do it before it actually takes effect. I don't, Chief, have you got any comments on the arrangement? I think it's working fine. I'm not getting any complaints in our office. It seems like they do a very nice job for us out there.
All right. So, again, this is an agreement, so we'd be looking for approval of this.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement for a year between the Humane Society of Wapaka County and the City of Wapaka.
We have a motion by Lockwood.
Second.
Second by Fenske, that we approve of this agreement with the Wapaka County Humane Society. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
And John Lockwood.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks. Sandy. Next, you have ordinance. We have, anything else you want to do, John?
Looked up, I saw half the light's on.
Nap time, everybody. You have an ordinance, number 0314. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 7.12 of the Wapaka City Code, which deals with operating and parking of motor vehicles in public parking lots. This is a first reading. Henry does have a memorandum in there for you guys, but Henry, I just want to touch on it.
Yeah, it says, I would call this a cleanup ordinance. I believe Barb in our office noted, noticed that we probably need to change our park, the parking lot piece of this, because we did sell the parking lot to Farmer State Bank, the one that was on Sessions Street in Washington. And then we did acquire the QuickTrip. And part of that deal that we worked out, when we leased it, was that we were going to carve out some of the parking for public parking. So, that sort of precipitated it. And then, as we got into it and staff reviewed it, John made my office aware that we, we needed to add a couple one-way streets to the, to the code that were omitted. So, this is really adding one-way streets that weren't in the code, and then just cleaning up the, the numbers on our parking lots. And then adding the QuickTrip parking lot as a parking lot that we do not allow overnight parking. There's two lots in the city, the City Hall parking lot and the QuickTrip parking lot that would not allow parking overnight. Well, if anybody has any questions?
I, I did note on page 188, paragraph D, sub-paragraph 1, there's a typo that should probably be cleaned up also. The word "removed" is incorrectly spelled.
And that's on what page?
188, paragraph D, sub-paragraph 1.
Well, that's in the code itself.
Now, whether that should be cleaned up at the same time?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, sure.
Absolutely. That's back when they were using typewriters. They didn't want to start over.
No spell check, right? Section from beginning to end.
D1, the word "removed."
Wow, that's good.
Shows you what I have to do with my nights, right?
Well, that's good. Now, we got two proofreaders.
You, you didn't have a whole lot to do either, Al?
Oh, no. I apologize.
Oh, this might be competition now, though. I don't know.
So, how can Phil find it?
All right. Great. This is the first reading of this, so you will see it on the consent agenda at next If you have any questions or comments about it as you look through it, or if any of the residents do, make sure you make note of that, and we can discuss it at next month's meeting. Okay, next, we have WapakaOnline.net is requesting to apply for a state broadband, broadband grant. And Josh, you gonna, he's got a memo in here that starts on page 191, but tell us what it's all about.
We learned that the state's going to be offering a broadband grant through the Public Service Commission, and got our hands on the information about that and saw that we would be eligible. For the next ten years, they're going to be awarding up to $500,000 a year to companies and services that are working to extend broadband into underserved areas. And they define that as an area that has two or fewer broadband options. And from what I could find, satellite was not included as a viable option for that. And that's, you know, many of the rural areas that we cover right now or are not covering fall into that. And we're proposing to apply for the grant to cover part of the cost of the upgrades that we're actively working on. And we're going to do those upgrades regardless of if we get grant money or not. But the other one would be adding additional POP locations to get into areas that we're not able to cover right now and that aren't being served. If we were to work the grant, we'd have 24 months to complete all the activities on And what we're looking to do, we, in your packet, we've listed the current POP locations that we need to complete work on to get up to full speed, to service our customers better. And let me propose several areas that we would consider getting into if we were to get some of this money, some really underserved areas. And we've got a kind of a generalized budget in here estimating how much these activities would cost. And if you would approve us applying for this grant, we'd get into more detail and get the application together and kind of finalize all this. One consideration, the PSC is putting on this is matching funds. It's not required that we match, but they're going to give extra consideration to organizations that would match. And we're pretty limited in what funds we could dedicate to a project like this. But two matching areas we'd look into, since we're already going to spend money on POP upgrades, we'd propose in this that we'll cover half that cost, and they'd cover the other half. And, you know, if we didn't get this or don't apply, we'd cover that full cost. And the other area, we'd use our existing, Mark and Chris, our existing staff, we'd use them during their normal hours to complete some of this work. So, their time that we're already paying for would be put toward this project at times as well as a match to see if we get some extra consideration. That's just kind of a brief overview. I've included a copy of the application instructions that really details this project. And there's a map at the end that shows where we are now and areas we're looking to get into. Any questions or comments?
Henry, did you want to touch on some things?
No, I think this is a great opportunity, I think, for Wapaka Online, getting outside the city limits is really sort of our sweet spot. And this is what this project would do. And again, I think the size of the grant is, application is not unreasonable for them to consider at the state. But again, they, they may just decide to award one $500,000 grant, you know, I don't know.
One advantage we have is we're able to cover a lot more area for this amount of money. The cost I hear that it typically costs for DSL or cable to bury lines is about $20,000 per mile. And $500,000 a year isn't going to cover a lot of miles, whereas we can cover a lot more with wireless. So, that, you know, I don't know how the state's going to look at, but it could work out as an advantage for us.
I make the motion that we give Josh permission to move forward with this grant opportunity.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Keeland, that we ask Josh to go forward with the grant application with the State of Wisconsin.
Thanks.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Thanks. Next, we have a protection-maintenance agreement with Energy Control and Design Incorporated. John?
This is an annual preventive-maintenance agreement. City went out and solicited proposals in 2011 and did select energy control design for preventive-maintenance. Provides four inspections a year, four service trips a year to the City Hall, boilers, burners, circ pumps, air handling units, variable frequency drives, humidifiers, air conditioning units, we have two of those, VAV boxes, duplex air compressor, air dryer, and the control system, we have two control systems. It includes cleaning, tuning, inspection, seasonal startup of all the equipment as well. And then the city purchases filters and belts that they utilize for replacement or repairs. So, any work beyond that, emergency call-in work or outside of those service trips is additional to the contract. But we've been able to schedule with them repairs that are needed while they're here on those quarterly visits. And that's worked out pretty well for us. So, it's very expensive to operate HVAC systems in buildings, and we felt this is the best route to take. So, this would be a renewal then of last year's contract. There is less than a 3% increase, and we would need action on that tonight, Mayor.
If you could see on page 205, the request for 2014, 2015 is $3,983. So, we'd be looking for a motion to approve that for the amount not to exceed that.
I would vote for approval. Sorry.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Fenske, a second by Hagan, that we agree to the agreement with, sorry, trying to find the name here.
Energy Control.
Energy Control and Design Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $3,983. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Sandy. We are, since we have another meeting after this, let's just move forward. Don't forget, after this meeting, take a five-minute break or so, and then let's head over to the library rooms A and B. Take your stuff with you. Don't leave anything in here that, you know, your computers or anything. But take those with you. So, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting, which is March 4th, 2014. Subject's call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Against, motion carried. Thanks, everybody, for attending and watching.